That's kind of cool, we're all filled out here.
Yeah. Where's Kitty? She can take a photo?
We have all our meetings joint.
Photo?
And combine all of our agendas.
I don't think they want some of our agenda. I don't think they want some of ours.
Yeah, well, okay.
All right, I believe we're all ready. It is six o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Dr. Mitzik, has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
And roll call will show that for the school district, all five board members are present, and President Zabrowski?
Roll call, please.
Roll call shows that six of the Southern Village Board members are present. Trustee Sell is excused.
Great, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And welcome, by the way, to our Village Board members.
I pledge allegiance to the Board of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and again, I want to welcome the Village Board here tonight for our joint meeting, and so great to get back to doing this. First on our agenda tonight is our citizen comments. We always do a set at the beginning and at the end, much like the Village Board. I'll just welcome any that are here to speak this evening. We would like to remind you that the school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public. Through School Board Bylaw 0167.3, the Board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. In accordance with the intent of the open meetings law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. In order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak and to ensure that the official business of the district is addressed, Board policy sets a time limit for citizen comments. We will be adhering to that Board bylaw and its time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the Board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to only one time. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed thirty minutes. So, are there any citizen comments tonight? There's never any pressure. Okay, so I don't see any, so seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. The first item is an action item for the school board tonight. So, we are going, we are set to approve the resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes. And Dr. Mitzik, I don't know if you have anything you want to mention on this?
Yes, yes, I do. In June, the school board approved this resolution as it exists, exactly as it exists. And at that time, we were discussing taking out a loan to pay for the new English Language Arts curriculum resources and the renovations to bring some of our students with highest special education needs back in-house with renovations to the SAC at the middle school. And so, we approved that resolution. There was a thirty-day waiting period to determine if we needed to go to referendum. No one stepped forward, and we began the application process for the loan. In the application process, the State Trust Fund through which we were getting the loan said that the resolution needed to be passed after the application was submitted. So, we are asking that the Board take action to approve again so that we have the proper date on the resolution passing after the application was completed. So, this is a technical correction essentially for the loan that was, that we originally authorized in June.
Okay, so with that, I don't know if there's any further questions. I know we had a chance to review and probably talk to Dr. Mitzik, but anybody have any questions on this item? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the borrowing of that to exceed eight hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes as outlined in item five.
A second. So, we do have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to, not to exceed eight hundred seventy-four thousand dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes. Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call, please. Oh, yep.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, so motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Mitzik, for that. Next on our agenda is an ad hoc committee discussion for the Greendale Park and Recreation. So, who is going to take the lead on that discussion?
So, I will lead that discussion, and then Mr. Hawes and Mr. Ryan Broderick, our Park and Recreation Director, are also going to add additional comments where it's appropriate. So, we'll ask Mr. Broderick if he wants to come up to the microphone for the presentation. Our goal this evening is to provide updated information on the process of our Park and Recreation study that's happening jointly between the Village and School District, and we've been engaged in for a little bit over three months right now. Wanted to provide an update on that and allow an opportunity for both the Village Board and School Board to ask questions, to have a better understanding of that process. Because what's been key throughout is the level of community engagement through this study. So, we wanted the opportunity here while we're about midway through that process to be able to share information on where we are today and allow both boards to ask questions, and that'll help us with our planning with a goal of wrapping up this process at the end of the calendar year.
So, with that, are we going to begin with Ryan, then?
So, I will, I'll lead the presentation, and then both Ryan and Mike will add in additional commentary to this where, where it's appropriate and add on.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. So, we wanted to start off by talking about some of the things that we are doing collaboratively between Village and School District, because I think this is a partnership that each year that I have been in the School District, I'm starting my fifth year, each year we continue to have conversations on how we can build on that partnership. And so, the, the benefits of doing that are, we sometimes have expertise through the Village side that the School District may not have, and we want to tap into that if it's going to be more economical, or it's going to come to a solution quicker for a community member so that we can provide savings and provide better services. And vice versa, if we have expertise that the Village would want to tap into from the School District side. So, some of those areas, one that's talked about a lot between both boards is our work in shared IT services. So, we all know that we share one IT director, and through that work, have conversations about how we can build out IT infrastructure that will support the community. So, recently, there was an extension to the fiber system that exists for the School District to connect that to the Community Learning Center, and so, providing that extension to the, the Park and Rec Department and the Village. And now, on the agenda in the next year, my understanding, is additional extension to that fiber system to connect the location at Sixty-Eighth and College to the DPW Center, and then from a connection that we have in the fiber system to the water tower. And so, we're having those conversations, because there's been significant investment on the School District side to build out that pipeline. And now, rather than the Village having to start from scratch in building that infrastructure, we can share that and provide, you know, better quality services at a cost-efficient rate. And so, that's something that Ryan Jonas, in his role, brings a lot of expertise, and when it makes sense, we want to explore those options so that we can provide those better services. Another one that comes to mind is we've partnered on two different projects for the School District for Concrete and Asphalt. We redid the College Park Elementary parking lot, and now have done a project for ADA Accessibility at Greendale Middle School. And so, we've taken advantage of the scale of the bid process and engineering design as the Village is doing work, and been able to add on these additional projects so that we can save and scope. So, we're very grateful for that partnership, because it's saving taxpayer money, it's saving on our budget from the School District end to be able to do that when it makes sense to the, the overall work, and we can get a little bit more of those projects done with the limited dollars that we have available. School Resource Officers, so we have two different School Resource Officer positions in the district, and continue to have great partnership with the Chief and Dr. Mitzik in how we operate that program in the district. And then, what we're talking about here this evening, the Park and Recreation Study. So, wanted to give some scope to that, to say that there's beyond what we're talking about this evening, there's other ways that we're trying to share those resources. So, then, on to the Park and Recreation Committee itself. So, where this started was the formation of an ad hoc committee. And so, as we were taking a look at transition of some of the leadership roles, in particular, our Park and Recreation Director with the retirement of Jackie Schweitzer, we had this opportunity to look at Park and Recreation within the community through kind of a new lens, knowing that he was coming into the role. And so, we had the conversation of creating an ad hoc team so that through School Board policy, you can create an ad hoc team that will have a set, set objectives for a set period of time to complete a task. And the task that we could see ahead was needing to look at mission and vision of the Park and Recreation Department and our programming, and being able to take that on with a new director coming on board. So, the appointment by the School Board of that ad hoc committee would allow us to do that, and as we were having the conversation, it dovetailed really well with the place that the Village was at. Mr. Hawes obviously coming in new to the Village, and also being at a point that there was work needing to be done on a new corp study. So, we investigated that in interviews and looking at pricing to do a study jointly that would meet the needs of the School District Park and Recreation Program as well as completion of that corp study. And so, as we've got here in point four, the, the working group that we created has a very even balance of representatives from the Village and School District that are now engaged with our outside consultants and talking about the, the study and working together and making sure that we're capturing the information we need to set a vision moving forward. And that goal is really to engage all of our community members in looking at those indoor and outdoor recreation spaces in a time and cost-efficient manner. So, if we were to do these studies on our own with different teams, we may not get the same level and depth of information as if we tried to pool our resources and do this in an integrated manner. And so, that's where we felt like that we could really excel in doing this work as if we were able to do it jointly. So, when the School Board created the ad hoc committee, they provided three tasks. And so, one was to take a look at the current mission of the department, so you see that listed here. So, the, the current mission of the Greendale Park and Recreation Department is to provide comprehensive programs, services, facilities, activities, and lifelong learning opportunities to enrich the quality of life in the Greendale community. So, number one, taking a look at that mission. Number two, assessing the facility conditions of indoor and outdoor recreation spaces in order to support community programming. And then, three, advise on future programming priorities for the Park and Recreation Department. So, when we talk about the ad hoc team, their goal is to come back and report out on these three items.
Could I just give an update real quick on the ad hoc committee? So, we have eighteen wonderful people that have committed their time to meet six different times. We've met four times total so far. We have two more meetings to go, but it's a wide variety of people with various lenses to Greendale. So, as far as the mission statement, so far, the first couple of meetings, we looked at other like communities or recreation and park departments, looked at their mission statements, looked at ours, and we identified keywords that we wanted to be part of our mission statement. We got into small groups, and we ended up with six different mission statements, and we put it to a vote, and we basically had even votes for two different mission statements. So, right now, we're down to two mission statements. We're going to blend it, get it done by our last meeting. And then, as far as the facility conditions and indoor, indoor and outdoor spaces, we looked at a lot of data on the total usage of the facilities used by Park and Rec and other users like Junior Panthers Basketball. The really great thing about all the community organizing that we've been doing between the community survey, between the community engagement session, the focus groups, we've got all of this new information from the community telling us what they want. So, we're going to bring that back to the committee for our last two meetings to finalize that. On top of that, we also have Growth and Vanderwall, who are putting these studies together of indoor and outdoor facilities. So, now we'll have real, concrete information on our facility conditions. So, that's going to be a great help, and that'll be a big part of our last two meetings that we have. And then, as far as advising on future programming, we presented basically what Park and Rec programming looks like, so what, what time of the day is our classes? What age are these classes offered for? What is the average cost? Just a lot of data behind the current programming for Park and Rec. And again, now that we have all this community input and information, we'll be able to bring that back to the committee and advise on how we want to move forward with future Park and Rec programming.
Any questions at this point from anyone?
First off, I want to thank the fact that we're having these joint meetings. Again, I think they're very helpful, and appreciate the School Board for hosting it. A question on the surveys that was sent out. Do you have a tabulation of how many electronic compared to hard copy was sent in?
The survey results were just received yesterday, so we have not had a chance to unpack that yet. They have some preliminary from a small committee that met this morning, but we're not ready to share those publicly. The focus of the sharing tonight is the process and what we're going to do next based on the information that we got.
Okay.
I did have one question for Ryan, or maybe Dr. Mitzik. With the School District, we oftentimes, we benchmark against other surrounding districts. I know you said you kind of looked at other surrounding Park and Recs. Do we, are we benchmarking in any sort of a way the activities that we offer here compared to our surrounding districts or communities?
As far as, like, what, what benchmark?
Just, you know, the, the types of offerings or, you know, like, because I know you're looking at indoor and outdoor uses, just to kind of get flavor for what maybe is going on in surrounding communities.
So, we work very closely with Greenfield, and we collaborate on a lot of classes. So, a great thing about that relationship is a lot of stuff that they're really good at offering, where we don't necessarily have the instructors for. But that is really the only municipality at this point that I've worked with. But in a lot of this work that we've hired Growth and Vanderwall, they do have surrounding areas in their work, and it's just in draft form, and I just saw it, so.
So, to, to add on to that, there is a component of the study where we've asked one of our team members to do a study of some of the area districts, because some of the foundational conversations around Park and Recreation led to questions about how some of our indoor athletic facilities in particular compared with area districts. So, that is a component of the study that we will have in November, December, is taking a look at that. So, you're thinking about like, capacity, you know, how many courts do they have for a particular sport, right? And how that may compare, and that, yeah, that was part of the initial conversation. So, that, that will in part address the question that you have, is trying to understand where we are in total capacity of facilities.
Great, thank you.
Let's follow up question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know we aren't ready to discuss things here tonight, but will there be another meeting where the School Board and Village Board can discuss anything from the surveys, or are they just going to go out and have no other feedback? Is this the last chance?
Actually, great segue, Trustee Buy. I want to talk about some things coming up, which will include another joint meeting.
Okay.
Green. Should be green.
Test.
There you go.
I was trying to segue that right in for you.
So, here's a picture of the timeline. We will highlight some of the key items that we've done and have coming up, but just wanted to give some scope that when we meet as a core team to plan out this work, that we're trying to think about the whole six to eight month period of time that we're going to be engaged in this work, and be really strategic about that, that we try and capture as much community input as possible during that time. And so, to hit on that, we've got our six ad hoc committee dates. We've completed four thus far, and then we had a gap in that ad hoc committee so we could complete some community engagement activities, so I'll highlight those. Our core committee kickoff was May ninth, and then followed that with site walkthroughs. So, those teams from Growth and Vanderwall went to all of the indoor athletic recreation facilities as well as all of the outdoor recreation facilities on the same day, and then they've done some follow-up as needed when they needed to take a closer look at, at certain areas, but did a lot of that work back in June. We then prepared for our two big in-person community engagement sessions on July twelfth and July nineteenth. So, we utilized the community parade on the fourth to invite all community members to be part of that work, and then launched that community survey the same evening that we had the community engagement session, and had that through August seventh. Continued engagement with the farmer's market on July fifteenth to answer questions and continue to talk to community members about the work that we're doing. And then, as I mentioned, on the nineteenth, we had community focus groups. So, we've got a slide up ahead that'll talk a little bit more in detail of that work. And then, that leads us to what we do next going forward. So, the team from Growth and Vanderwall is going to help with preparing those draft plans, and then we want to have another opportunity to have a joint board meeting before that plan is completed. And so, we're working on a date that would be in November where we could give additional information on where we're at, but get those last questions that we may have, and then targeting mid to late December for the plan completion.
One of the conversations around the community survey at the point in the process that we're at is if we identify gaps in representation on the survey, that we target those populations in some other way to get their input added to the survey data.
And when you say the plan's completed, you mean then we talk about fundraising at that point?
I don't know that fundraising would be.
So, that's a good question. So, when we say plan completion, we want a study of those indoor and outdoor recreation spaces, and there will be potential solutions to those ideas. And then, I think there will be discussion about what the action steps are. The study is not meant to say that either entity is going to go to any type of referendum. The study is meant to understand where the community is at today and understand what gaps we may have in services versus what the community is looking for. And so, that's the focus, is it's going to highlight from all of these conversations, synthesize that information, say, these are potential solutions to those, those issues. And then, that will be further conversation if there's financial resources needed for solutions that either the School District or Village wants to prioritize.
Fair enough, so it's like a wish list. In a way.
I, there's a, there, it's, I wouldn't just call that a wish list, I would say this is creating a strategic plan, like where are we trying to get to, to understanding priorities that the community has for utilizing those indoor and outdoor recreation spaces. And I think there are some things that can be done low or no cost, things that we're talking about while the study is going on. It could be how we share resources for taking care of fields between Village and School District, right? Those are things that we're talking about now that could address items, and then there could be other things that are more capital in nature. And so, you know, if that's like, considered wish list, those could just be capital needs in order to meet a particular goal. But the, the, what we've asked those teams to do is to think creatively and not provide one solution to that, but think about different ways that we could meet those service needs within the spaces that we already have available.
I did have a question about the survey. Are there any specific age ranges? I mean, are, are youth allowed to do this survey as well, or I'm, I'm getting the impression you do gather that demographic information?
Do you want to touch on that one, Ryan?
Yeah, it was all ages could take it. A lot of the youth were represented by adults in the household, like we did not get a high percentage of youth that took the survey. A good percentage was, I think it was pretty much thirty and up was the biggest portion of the survey takers.
Okay. And, and do we have like a total, how many have taken the survey so far from the community?
Six hundred and thirty-seven.
Which is about a third?
I think it's like four and a half percent of the community, if my math was correct, which is higher than, than most surveys like this. I think usually, I believe that Growth and Vanderwall said it came in at like two and a half or three percent of the community usually takes a survey.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we go on?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank everyone for the hard work in identifying the, the needs in the community, and then hopefully we can work towards some creative solutions. So, four percent return on a survey is considered advanced for surveys like this?
So, so that is one component of how we're gathering information. So, I think to kind of continue on, we have a slide here of that community engagement opportunity. So, if you can remember, because I think most everybody at the table was there this, that evening, that was like the heaviest storms that we may have seen all summer, and we had over seventy community members show up to have a conversation and engage on their priorities. So, those people may or may not have also taken the survey, but they thought it was important that evening. And so, that overshot what our hope was for that evening, but we weren't surprised because we know the Greendale community is very involved, and particularly involved in prioritization of recreational spaces. So, we had an engaged group that were there, and a couple more pictures that just show we were able that evening to allow everybody to share their opinions, those that wanted to be more talkative versus those that may have just wanted to leave a note. But there on the left side, you see College Park and just a host of different thoughts and ideas that are also part of this conversation. So, I would not want to give the impression that the survey is the only way. So, I would not want to give the impression that the survey is the only way that the community is able to engage. We've also taken all of this data, and this has all been synthesized as well, and it'll be part of the report and the recommendations. So all the opportunities that we have for community members to come and give feedback are important in us understanding where the focus should be going forward. And then, community focus groups. Ryan, do you want to touch on that a little bit?
Sure, so we had, we had four different groups, different people from the community come in. As you can see, we had one group revolving senior citizens and auditorium usage, we had another group with community organizations, another group for outdoor sports, another for indoor. So, Growth and Vandalwall led the, those meetings and asked questions, stirred up conversation, and again, it goes back to the community's voice. So, all these groups talked for about an hour, really good conversation around their lens and how that works for the community. And there was, again, a lot of information that came out of that, that will go with the community engagement session, that will go with the ad hoc community, that will go with the core team meeting. So, the survey was not a one-for-all. It was, it's really been a, really a community effort, and I think that's going to lead to a lot of good things for the village, the school district, and all of us as one community.
So then, we've talked about the community survey. So 637 survey responses. And so, some of the demographic components of what we know thus far, 69% of the respondents were between the ages of 30 and 59. 27% of respondents were age 60 and older, and 4% of respondents were under age 30. About 50% of respondents have a student in the Greendale schools. So as, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just something I was going to add to that, because I was taking a look at this kind of carefully, comparing with our demographics. So, overall, the, the 30 to 59 age group is overrepresented in the survey, compared to our demographics, which you might expect, because those are mostly parents of, of children who are concerned, or thinking about the parks and the recreation programs. And then, taking a look at the 27% of the people that are age 60 and older, so that actually lines up with the demographics of the community, compared to the 2020 census, 27% of Greendale is age 60 and older. And then obviously, what we were underrepresented in was in the number of, of people under age 30. So as Dr. Midsick said, that, you know, we want to make sure that, what we're doing in the, in the plans then, we're going to figure out a way to try to get those, those viewpoints represented, because those were underrepresented in, in the survey process. So overall, I, I think they were kind of what we expected. We had a lot of conversation today with the core team, with the consultants, on, you know, their feeling of the survey and, and the value. And, and they felt that, yes, compared to other projects, similar projects, this is a strong result. Compared to our village-wide survey that we did last year, the, the villages, the village did a more general survey, and we had 801 or 802 responses. So this is, I would say, being more of a, a niche survey. Obviously, the survey we did last year was more general. I think it touched a lot of different areas that people are concerned about. This was very specific, where maybe some people weren't as, as into the, the topic, but it was also a very long survey. And it, and it was only offered electronically, or to pick up a, a copy. We didn't mail the copies due to the length of the survey. But as we, as we're discussing, the, you know, we're still satisfied, and the consultant team is very satisfied with the response rate, mostly, mostly satisfied with the demographics. And again, this is, this complements the, the other types of community engagement processes that went into this, which was pretty involved compared to other planning processes that I've been, been involved with, having the focus groups and the community engagement sessions. So, I think we'll be really, I think when we, when we see it all together as a package, we'll be really happy that we have a robust process of, of information gathering.
I think the consultants too have mentioned numerous times of how pretty amazing this is that the village and the school district are doing this together. It's not done very often, or I think anywhere near here, so it's a, it is a very cool community effort.
Absolutely.
We work pretty well together.
So, next steps, gathering that community input and other data, compile that into draft plans. We have the opportunity here to ask additional questions. We want to highlight and emphasize that there's the ability for all of our community members to continue to engage if they have feedback on that. So whether they're reaching out to Ryan, or whether they want to reach out to Mike, or even myself or Dr. Midsick, with feedback that we have, we're going to continue to meet as an ad hoc team and core team, and we can synthesize that information. If somebody stops us and says, you know, "I haven't been able to make it to your community engagement sessions, I couldn't complete the survey, here's some information that I want to make sure that I share." And so we've tried really hard to hit, reach out to key community members, and utilize that ad hoc team to engage their neighbors and other community members they know, to do that. But we're still in the middle of this process. So if there's information that you're hearing from community members, they can get in touch with one of us and provide that information, so we can feed that into the process. And then, the next steps will be scheduling that open house and next joint board meeting. And so, wanted to wrap this up, and then we can take additional questions, but we're really proud of the community engagement here in Greendale, the conversations, the volunteerism around this, and the overall support to make this a worthwhile planning process, and set the vision and priority for our parks and recreation programs. So we see like, very high levels of energy when we have these meetings, people talking about things they're passionate about, and they want to help us in that process. And so we're very grateful that we have all that help and support, because it's going to make the work easier as we try to put this together. So with that, happy to take other questions.
So what questions? Anyone have any questions tonight? Go ahead, and if you want to pass a microphone over, and make sure it's on green.
So if you're still looking for input from community members, maybe something could be put in the village newsletter, or a school newsletter, or a, you know, weekly school email, asking residents to provide input if they missed that opportunity suggestion?
And I guess to the earlier point, is there an opportunity through, through the schools to try to get input through, from, from students, since we're missing kind of that demographic?
Yes, there is definitely opportunity. We also have student representation on the Park and Recreation Committee, and that would be the student that would work with us to lead that collection of information.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on this? Go ahead, President Zabrowski.
Just want to thank everybody that was involved with doing this. It's pretty awesome, and I do feel that the village and/or school district definitely needs to start thinking about updates on different things, whether it's a year or five years, but we need to start looking at the future regarding recreation, and just really thankful for all that were involved to put this together and make it happen. So thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'll, I'll just, you know, echo some of the additional comments about, you know, thanking the, the team for, for the work here. I think we all enjoy and appreciate the quality of life that we have in, in Greendale, and I think the park and recreation is an integral part of, of that. When you talk about, the park and recreation touches youth, touches our senior citizens, so it's nice to see that we're putting together a strategic plan, you know, and then coupling that with, okay, what are the facilities that are needed, and what are the, the investments that are needed? But it's hard to make those decisions without a strategic plan, so I, I think you're doing it in the right order. So thank you for, for providing that guidance.
Joe, are you the Park and Rec?
Rob?
Rob? Have you been attending these events?
We've had one meeting since, since I got on there.
I would just like to echo what's been said by President Zabrowski and Joe as well. I think it's great that the village board and the school district are, under your leadership, my cause, as well as Dr. Midsick, that we are working together. I think only good things can come from this, and our community does thrive on, you know, activity and, and being an active community. So I, I think the work that's going into this is very important. You know, any opportunity, as Board, our trustee, Unger, said, to make sure that others still have a voice in this, you know, whatever ways we can, so that, you know, the end product does represent, you know, what this community is looking for, I think will be great. But I, I think it's exciting times, and I, you know, think Greendale has a lot to offer. And, and I think, just like we have a plan for our buildings in the district, where we are, you know, now really laying out what the plan is to, you know, continue to keep up to date, I think that, that's very important for Park and Rec, and for the activities that we have in the community, to have a plan in place. So I think this is exciting. So thank you.
So, anyone else? Go ahead.
I could just add one more thing. So, I think selfishly, probably like Ryan as well, coming into this community fairly new, being able to be a part of this process from the beginning, and the, the information that we're getting from it is, is so valuable. When we, when we started this process, we couldn't really get a, an accurate list of the parks in Greendale. It was like, we had a running list, and it was like, oh, what about that? Is that a park? And then what's the name of that park? And, and, and people not even knowing that what's Edgerton Park, you know what I mean? That's a, that's a park that's been there a long time, longstanding residents don't even know what it is. So just getting an inventory of everything that we have, getting, you know, getting a good inventory of, of who's responsible for what, what's a village park, what's a, what's a school park, who's responsible for what, what's there? This is, you know, the recommendations are going to be, are going to be very helpful for putting together a, a capital plan, a strategic plan, but just the baseline data that we're getting from this that didn't exist before, we're going to be, I, I think we'll all be very impressed with the level of information and data we'll be able to get that will help us, that the mapping that, that we're getting from this that doesn't exist. So it's, it's really exciting from, from my perspective, and we couldn't have done it, if, we couldn't have done it if we didn't do it together, like, because we do, the school district uniquely owns some parks. So the fact that we're working together, leveraging dollars together, we have a really high-quality, I think, consultant team. I've worked with other consultant teams that, you know, you get what you pay for. So, together, we're getting a, I think, a really high-quality project, and so I'm, I'm really excited about it, and I think it'll be a really good model for other communities. Other people I've talked to in similar positions, other communities like, wow, that would be great if we could, our school district and the, and the municipality work together on it, like, so the fact that we've done those other things, we've done, we're doing this, I mean, it just speaks to, we need to continue meetings like this, because the end result is, the, the bottom line is, is best for the citizen.
Just a quick question, with the parks, as you mentioned it, putting on a county hat for just a second, we also do have county parks that are part of, is that part of this study as well, the county park system?
So the, the county actually has its own planning document, so we, I mean, the, the plan will acknowledge and take inventory of what's, what's there, but as far as a strategic planning document, that's within the county's purview, so there's, there's a separation there.
Okay, but I do know, like, we, we do events in Dale Creek, and at the gazebo, and so forth, we have a, a good working relationship there.
And it does, sorry, Ryan, it does, it does, so it does kind of treat that as more of a local park that we have some control over, because the village has a lease with, with Daffodil, for Daffodil Park and Gazebo Park. So the, the plan does kind of treat those as village parks, but as far as the other areas where we don't have a lease, they're more treated as within the county's purview, completely.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And as far as Park and Rec goes, it's, you know, I'm going to have a draft, or, I'm going to have a plan, I should say, I'm going to have the community's voice, and be able to build off that. So this is incredible for me to get all this information, seven months in, and actually going through this process, and learning whose land is whose land, and who runs what, and all that, like, it was a lot of research, and a lot of information I need to know to do my job. So this has been a tremendous opportunity for me as well, to learn my job, as well as to, to build this vision with the community, so I'm excited to get to work.
Great.
Yeah, it sounds like things are in really good hands. It's always good to know who owns what property, right? Where the property lines are.
Trustee Unger.
One quick item, I haven't heard that's mentioned yet, but putting together the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan makes us eligible for grant money.
That's a big part of it, too.
Really good point. And then, President Zabrowski.
Just one last thing, have, has the school talked with all the coaches of all the different sports regarding what they're kind of looking for?
So they were part of the community focus group.
Awesome.
A good majority of them, and Jared Galante, who's the athletic director, was, sat for both of the indoor and the outdoor, so.
Okay.
Well-covered. And like, organizations like Twi Night, and Junior Panthers, they've been included throughout this whole process, too, so.
I believe there, I saw at least two or three coaches at the community engagement meeting as well. I know one of them talked to Jonathan Mitchell. All right, thank you for this update. We'll, we'll hear soon, I'm sure, when the November meeting will be planned for, so we look forward to getting updated again, and thank you for bringing all this information to us. It's, it's exciting times for the village. Item seven is our, an update on the new ordinance. I believe this is a village ordinance 952. It's the vaping prohibited on school grounds. I know we're going to have a discussion here in a moment. We do have a few school district policies as it relates to smoking and vaping and so forth, but anxious to hear, there have been some updates to the village ordinance as of recently, so I don't know who wants to take the lead.
I'll start. We put this on the agenda because my understanding is that the most recent board meeting, there was conversation about how are the schools handling this, and what does it look like, based on some citizen feedback, since Mary was at the village board meeting as the village board liaison. So we wanted to put it on here to share a little bit about how the school district is addressing vaping as a large problem, and it is part of our partnership, because the community alliance that is led by the health department, the school district, and school representation is part of that committee, and vaping has been one of the areas that they've had concerns about in the community. So, it is good, and I think that's part of the impetus behind why the village was taking action on an ordinance. And we have recently revised health curriculum. I don't know if Maggie wants to join me for a conversation about our health curriculum, and some of the statistics that we've collected, school-specific for that. So, we'll start, I think, by the school, just sharing some information on how we're proactively educating students on the risks and problems and challenges with vaping, and then reactively how we're addressing those as student behavior in the school, and then, in a larger picture of how staff and visitors to our school grounds are treated in a vaping situation. So, we'll start with the health curriculum. The health curriculum was recently reviewed and adopted in June, and so vaping was a topic that is covered in our eighth and ninth grade health classes, specifically because of our conversations with Community Alliance and its trending in drug practices.
Is this on?
It's on.
Look at that. Yes, so it was, we did too, since the last update for our curriculum review, vaping was not as common of a practice when, six years ago, when we did, had our last curriculum review. So it is something that, when we were looking at updating our curriculum, we ensured that that was included. And some of the, some of the additions that we are adding to the curriculum as a unit on prevention, also having some new videos that were purchased, and also, our health teacher is going to a conference to really think about how to proactively promote health, hope, and strength, and prevention of starting vaping, because it is an addictive substance. Then, when we're thinking about our current data of students who are using vaping, at the middle school, we had only three, no, I'm not, no, any amount is too much, I'm going to say first. And we have 3% of our students who self-identify that they have tried vaping, and those were all in eighth grade. And then in the middle school, I mean, in the high school, we had 14% of high schoolers say that they tried, and the numbers went a lot higher once they were in 11th and 12th grade. So we are below the national average by quite a lot. I'm trying to toggle between a couple different... a couple of different slides. The CDC says about 1 in 10, so 10% of kids have tried. So, and that's in middle school. And then 14% of high schoolers. So we are below the national average. It is still something that we want to ensure that all of our kids do not start to use vaping. And it is something that, as an administrator and in our schools, this is something that we're taking really seriously and trying to promote prevention from away as children. When, we want school to be a safe place to make mistakes so that they make mistakes in a safe place where they can learn from that mistake and not make that mistake out in the real world once they become an adult. And that's what we really want school to be.
And so we've been working with our school resource officers because even before this ordinance, it's obviously prohibited for children under the age of 18. And so we have practices in place in, really, in working with our school resource officers. And when a student is caught, I guess, for lack of a better term, vaping, then that we do investigate that. If there's a report of vaping, we interview, investigate and search with probable cause, following all the rules and regulations as an administrator does. If it's found, we do ask for the police, the school resource officer to test it. If it tests positive for THC, which is marijuana-related, and then it is cited as a ticket on the first offense. If it does not test positive for THC, meaning it's a nicotine-only, then there are school consequences issued that first time. And in future, if that student has a second violation of vape with nicotine, then they are additional school consequences. And we work with the school resource officer to cite the student. So we want to make sure that kids have space to make mistakes and that there's consequences for the mistakes. And we don't move to police consequences unless it's THC until a second offense. So that is how we're handling it with our student population. This ordinance does help us in terms of the presence of, of citing visitors to the school and having police intervention in that space. Because currently, our policies prohibit the use of any smoking materials, alcohol, vaping, drugs on school grounds regardless of your age. And we ask them to put it away or leave grounds if it becomes pervasive and problematic. But the ordinance does allow us to work with officers to cite people for using vapes on our school property. So that is a little bit of information that I know there was some of that discussion that came up at the last village board meeting. So we wanted to make sure that we shared some answers to those questions. And if there's other questions, happy to answer.
I'll just chime in for the record that the policy, the school board policy that we're referencing is 5512. And the policy committee met yesterday. And there's already some revisions, stricter revisions to the current policy, which is new to us as of July. So I think from all angles, people are recognizing issue with vaping in youth and trying to do what they can. Also, the student handbook, the Greendale High School student handbook on page 26 discusses, you know, makes it pretty clear, the students have to sign off on a handbook, that they're going to follow these rules. So they're aware of that. And so, you know, I, I think it's, some of the comments at the board meeting, at the village board meeting, were that some of the feedback the committee was getting was that all these, you know, kids are in the bathroom vaping. And of course, the vaping devices are easy to hide. So, you know, you first have to, you know, have some reason to search. You can't just search, you know, randomly. So, you know, do, we can't, I don't know, could you address the-
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
It's also included in the middle school handbook as well. So it's not just the high school, it's included in both.
Sure. And did you say, was, was it 4% of eighth graders?
3%.
3%. So that's only, what are there, 200 eighth graders? So that's six or seven students that are admitting that they've tried it. You know, some are probably not-
It's self-reported.
Yeah. And then the high schoolers would be 126 out of 900. So, you know, it's just-
Maggie, was that the survey component of the youth risk behavior survey? Is that where this information came from?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is, we are re, we are, that is, these are little lagging results. So we are waiting, we, they took it in spring and it's every two years. So we will have updated results and be sharing that out once we have those.
Historically, any kind of drug, alcohol, tobacco, other uses, we see a significant increase between middle school and high school, hence the reason that we have placed the learning and information in the eighth grade and ninth grade health curriculums because it is most timely as students are beginning to experiment or feel pressure to experiment.
And then it's, oh, and-
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, and that's something else that we are working with administration at the high school around. They're seeing this more than the middle school. And really trying to teach and, like, from a restorative place for kids, to have them understand the dangers, have those conversations of, some kids don't always understand that vaping is bad. So reminding them of that, the importance of prevention and the curriculum around health. And that's a really important part of that education as well.
Our medical advisor is a physician at Children's Hospital and also a professor at the Medical College of Wisconsin. She has been working with a team to do additional studies of vaping and the impact on youth. And recently, we authorized for her to advertise for study participants in the vaping study happening at Children's Hospital because our work with Community Alliance and our work in the schools, that is important research that she's working on. And so we're making sure that kids who are engaged have opportunity to participate in studies to see the dangers and the risks.
So Cam, you had mentioned that the combination of the school policy as well as the new ordinance, that we can, you know, we can address people who maybe are on school properties. So I-
Correct.
It's easy to, to understand what that looks like when we're talking about the schools.
Mm-hmm.
But that also includes, Vinsky Stadium, when a football game is going on Friday night, that also includes the flagpole area outside the middle school during Village Days where, you know, it's not as natural or notable that you're on school property in, at those places.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Trustee Barbee.
Cam, I was just wondering, I think it's now it's time to ask a question. When this was brought to the board, it was, said that there's groups of kids in bathrooms at the high school cluttering in there and all smoking vapes. Is that true, that you've caught people in large groups vaping in the bathrooms? Or is that just something that-
Large groups huddled around a vape? No. We have, we have had, bathrooms are a frequent place where we have identified. We, administrators have seen it happening in the bathroom and have taken action to issue consequences. We also have an anonymous reporting system called Stop It that students can report if there is a pervasive problem in the bathroom, like, hey, check the bathroom between this period and this period. Every day, there's someone in there. And that has been reported once or twice that administrators then are present and have identified students who are in violation of the, the rule in the school and dealt with that. We don't typically see huddled up in the bathroom.
Okay, thank you.
So do they ever have, like, I mean, like airplanes or like smoke detectors, vape detectors? I don't think the bathrooms at the high school have.
No, we have not invested in vape detection systems. There is a substantial cost to that. And so we're, we're relying heavily on reporting from students and observations. There has been a practice of checking bathrooms between class periods and definitely during the lunch periods that we have teachers. So there are teachers that during passing periods, will do a sweep of the bathroom to see where we're at and what's going on. And it is a problem.
For sure.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to add that. First, I want to preface my comment that I appreciate what Maggie said, that the best, the best time to catch a minor making a mistake is before they leave us, right? Because then it can be a learning experience with their parents, support, and teachers. And so we want them to learn from their mistakes. But the hallways, bathrooms and buses are notoriously tricky places for schools to monitor.
We have cameras in the hallways. We have cameras on buses. We do not have cameras in bathrooms.
Rightfully so.
And we shouldn't. I mean, that is a violation of law. So we don't have cameras in bathrooms. And therefore, we rely on non-digital methods to identify problems and support kids.
Yeah, no, I was just going to add that there are some school districts, and I'm not suggesting that Greendale do this, but if the problem becomes so bad that bathrooms get locked, you know, they're actually locked. And in order to go to the bathroom, you have to be escorted by someone with a key. And so we, we hope to not get to that level, right? I mean, keep in mind that the bathrooms are open, right? The bathrooms are open and children, and students are using-
We really want to keep-
Between classes.
Right? Like, your point, right, Mary? Like, we want to keep kids' dignity to make sure that if they need to use the bathroom, it's open. They don't need to go ask an adult for a key. So I think measuring as educators, we are really measuring that. We want students to have dignity. And we also want to make sure that they are acting appropriately. And that's where the balance is. Not to interrupt you, I'm-
No, no, no.
But I was like, ugh, triggered by the bathroom with the key.
Thank you.
No, but I think the bathroom, the, the middle school, they have a whole process where you have to check in and out which bathroom you're going to. And they only allow like two passes a day. So I kind of feel like they are being quite heavily monitored.
And we're, we have that same system, Tasha, at the high school as well, through ePass to know who's in the hallway, who's in the bathrooms, who's using those. So we do have a way of monitoring that as well. So I think that is a high-tech way, to your point, Tasha.
Monitoring the traffic.
Correct.
I did have a question, maybe regarding either, not our SRO, but just our Greendale Police Department. I guess it's not something we really talk about a lot. But do we have walkthroughs ever? And is a vape something that, like, if they brought in the canine unit, they'd be able to detect that?
Anybody know?
I don't believe so.
No?
No.
Yeah, that's not something that we're looking for.
I didn't, I didn't know if we're even doing walkthroughs at all, or-
We do.
We periodically, right?
We bring the dogs through for certain sections or certain areas at random times and set that up and coordinate that across a number of police departments. I do not believe that a vape is necessarily there, but THC-
Unless it had THC.
Yeah.
Like a tobacco vape wouldn't be caught in a canine.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Walkthrough.
Junior's good.
Yeah. He is really good. I did see his demonstration at Village Days.
I don't know that Junior's trained in THC.
Okay.
Oh, okay, that's good to know.
We do, when we do the sweeps to the schools, it's more than one dog. So Junior is one of the dogs that comes through. But there is a number of dogs that are trained in different substances. So.
Elaine, you had a question that I, sorry, I threw her hand.
I have a, a number of comments. So I've been listening to all this. So I work with Community Alliance. I am the local government rep on their committee. And we, we have been focusing on vaping for a number of months. Couple of things I want to point out, I'm really happy to hear that vaping will be discussed in the health classes. I think it's so important. I think a lot of kids think it's harmless water vapor and they don't realize it's nicotine and more. So I'm happy about the education. However, I don't think the Greendale School District has contacted Community Alliance or the Health Department like Martin Luther High School did, where Martin Luther brought in the health director, Ashley Haas, and Officer Bowle, and did an assembly for the students at Martin Luther. So that is available. And I asked that question and Holly Miller told me that Greendale School District has not asked for that same assembly. So I recommend you do that.
Thank you for that. I know that Mr. Josh Weber has actually been talking with the City and Fire Department about that. So that's good to know because he does some of the Community Alliance as well. So I'll follow up with him on that.
I, I recommend it. And whenever I come across high school students or middle school students, I ask them about vaping because I am an empty nester right now. And when I speak with them, they describe it as a major issue. I asked a student who is probably a senior this year, she is a tennis player. I asked her, if you have 30 kids in your class, how many of them vape? She said at least half. So I, you know, the youth risk behavior survey is great, but how many of the kids are being totally honest? Martin Luther High School, I believe, issues a citation right off the bat. And we hear a lot about mental health. We hear kids are anxious. Maybe they're anxious from the withdrawal of nicotine. That's something that can affect kids' mental health and affect them physically. And if you've got so many kids in nicotine withdrawal, that's probably affecting their moods. So I have a question for Dr. Misnick. You talked about school consequences. What are the school consequences?
That's a good question. They are progressive and they're in the handbook. So I'm going to have to pull them up.
I have the handbook pulled up.
Thank you. It, I know that there are-
Items will not be, these items will be confiscated and not returned. Possession of these may result in suspension from school. And other, there's possibility of connection with Greendale Police and suspension from school. And there's a possibility of, with reasonable suspicion, school authorities may search students or lockers and their belongings in the investigation for possession of these items.
So it begins within school suspension and can increase to out-of-school suspension. We have not done an expulsion recommendation, but there is a possibility for expulsion for repeated violation of rules. We have not risen to that level yet.
Yeah, I mean, the wording is pretty strict in the handbook. I mean, if I was a student reading this, I would, I mean, it says, this policy also applies to students over the age of 18. Matches and lighters are also prohibited. So it, you know, there's the policy and then there's the enforcement, right? So I, that might be what you're getting at, Trustee Unger, is, are these policies being enforced? And if so, how?
Well, and also where it's happening. We can control our school buildings, but if they're doing it, to your point, if someone's telling you what's happening outside of our school buildings, we have a little less control. And that's where education really becomes a big part. So I appreciate that. Thank you for that feedback.
And kind of along those lines, you know, outside, I, I'm looking at the ordinance and there's some mention in there about, you know, the ability to license and permits and selling vapor products. You know, you drive down 76th Street and it just seems like there's a new vape store opening up. What, what is the realistic implementation of, and what can the village do to, to control some of those licenses and things like that? Because it says there's, there's some control if you're 1,000 feet of a school. So what is, realistically, what does that look like?
So, so as of today, we know that there are five retailers that sell vape products. The ordinance says that there is going to be three vape licenses issued. So what that means is, as of today, or as of the date the ordinance was adopted, we will issue five licenses to those five, assuming they apply. We sent out application packets there with a deadline of August 31st. So we will honor the five that are in existence currently. But we will not issue any new vape licenses until that number of retailers is down below three. So once that gets down below three, we will not issue any more than three total licenses to retailers. And for any, for any retailers that want to open, we will not issue one to anyone within 1,000 feet of a school, whether that's a public school, private school, church school, what have you. So how that will play out, so and then for those that are licensed, there is language in there that says there's going to be, we're, we're going to do compliance checks. And if there are, is it three violations in two years?
Three.
Yeah. So, so that would be, so there's going to be, call it secret shoppers, but through the, the WINS program, you know, there's going to be minors going in. And if they, if they sell to those minors, then they will be cited. We did increase our citations. They were one-
174-ish. And now they're going to be $691 to match West Dallas.
And issued, which was the maximum amount of all of our neighbors, with citations issued to both the, the store and to the employee. So we're really trying to, I mean, we're- we're, this is a very aggressive, and actually, right away, other, other communities are asking, can we see that ordinance? Because they realize it's a problem everywhere. So we're trying to do everything that we can, you know, regulatory-wise, but while being, trying to be sensitive. Trustee Barbie and others have brought up like, you know, this is a free market thing as well. This is a legal product. These are, there are legal, law-abiding people that are using this product. But at the same time, you know, as a community that's, that's relatively small, we can't have these at every corner. So three was the number that we landed on in the future of how many retailers we will wanna allow.
So in regards to the Village, I, I don't have my glasses on right now, but I thought I read in, in this, your document here, the ordinance, that the, so many ti, or, I don't know if it's so many ti, you already touched on it so many times that, that it's kinda progressive. Does it come down to, do they lose their license then?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say. So they would be, in, in any two-year period, if they have three sales to minors, then they will lose their license and they won't be able to get it back, because, you know, obviously, we're not below the, the three licenses. So, pretty serious ramifications in that. We will be issuing a corrected version of the ordinance. We had a lot of back and forth with the Village Attorney. There is some confusion about what's the legal minimum age for, for vape products and tobacco products, because state, in the state of Wisconsin, the tobacco products are still eighteen as the minimum age, but federally it's twenty-one. But even though it's federally, it's twenty-one, our police department can only enforce eighteen. So that is what is currently the, the legal minimum age in Wisconsin to buy tobacco products. So we just, we had to do a minor correction in the ordinance, so we'll be re-releasing that.
So, and are they not allowed in our parks to be doing this vaping now? That was my understanding?
Yeah, so that was a new, that was a new wrinkle to this ordinance as well. So previously, our ordinance said that, our code book says that you can't use tobacco products within parks if there is a sign that says you can't use them in parks, which we're not aware of there being any signs. This new ordinance now says no tobacco or vape products in any parks regardless of signs.
So, and my question with that is, like, how, how much is the Village going to be enforcing that? And, and I don't, I'm not a big person on that kinda signage or things like that, but obviously, if people haven't attended the Village meeting, they probably aren't aware of this new ordinance. So how is that gonna be communicated?
Well, primarily, it's not something that, we, we had a lot of conversation about this, you know, especially at events and stuff. It's not something that's gonna be, you know, time-effective for police officers to be seeking help. So it'd be probably more complaint basis. But, I mean, it probably is reasonable that they're gonna issue a warning, more of an informational, hey, you can't do that here. And then, you know, if, if it's continued, then cite them. It's probably, probably be the approach, or probably be a learning curve to that.
Okay.
And here's the thing, they can just walk off to the road.
Right, yeah.
So there's like that gray area.
Remedy.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to clarify one thing. I did text Ryan, the police chief, so Junior was not trained in marijuana, but he can pick it up, so, for what that means.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Maggie, for that. All right, I, I think, are we okay? Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, in general, say how powerful I think it is for, obviously, we're all out in the community and we're leaders in the community, and for all of us to, to be aware of what the other's doing and what the current status of everything is. When it comes to teenagers, as most of us know, you know, you do the best you can. You try to, you try to limit the access to something that you don't want them to be doing that's not good for them. You try to give them the education. You come in with some consequences, and that's what we're doing. So we hope that the next time you run into a, someone from the high school, Trustee Unger, that's willing to talk to you about vaping, you'll get a different story. Maybe next summer.
I just wanna reiterate something that Chief Ryan said at our meeting when we talked about this, 'cause it was kinda surprising to me. And I, like, if parents are listening to hear this, so they get a lot of complaints from parents. Parents track their kids and they ding them at a vape shop, and they call the police and say, my kid's at a vape shop. They're selling them vape products. The problem with that is, they need the parents to press charges in order to give them a violation, and the parents are now willing to press charges for whatever reason. I'm not sure why.
Towards the vape shop. They don't want to.
Right, right. Even though they know they sold, they prove that they sold vape products to their children. So it would be very helpful if parents would start pressing charges or, I don't think it's quite that, I don't know what do you call it, but just you make a complaint, and then they can follow up on that. And that's the way we can try to monitor them, because the secret shoppers don't come up with a whole lot. I don't know if they're too smart for that or what, but.
Quick question, probably for Kim. Do we have the DARE program still in Greendale? And if so, no?
No, DARE's been gone for twenty years.
It has.
Yes.
I had a follow-up.
So, we have integrated that. We have added a health class at sixth grade and seventh grade. And so, the DARE instruction has been embedded in those programs.
I think this is a great conversation that we're able to have with the Village and the school district. And I would personally like to see this come back on our future agenda, just to see where we're at with it. 'Cause as the school year gets going, things are gonna pick up again. Obviously, kids coming back together, the pressures and all that. So, but I, I do wanna thank the Village for your step in this. As Dr. Mizik and I talked about the other day, this really helps the school district by you setting the ordinance the way you do at the Village level. It, it gives us kind of a soundboard as well, that we're not just out there kinda floundering and coming up with our own thing. So I appreciate, and I know there was a lot of heavy discussion at your last meeting. I did, wasn't there in person, but I did get to watch it. So I, I think it's a great conversation to have. And I think ultimately, probably every one of us sitting at this table wants a healthy community. And, you know, these are ways that we can help look out for our neighbors. So, thank you for the work that was with this. And I, I don't know if the Community Alliance is out there, but I know they do some great work. And.
The Community Alliance is partially represented in this room, so.
Oh, of cour, yeah, well, and, yes, okay. So anyways, anybody else on this then? Otherwise, we'll move on. But I would like to see it come up again, you know, just for an overview as where we're at. Next up is our Village update, or the update on the Village of Greendale. So, Manager Haas.
Sure, that's pretty open-ended. I'll talk about South Ridge. So recently, you may have seen in the, in the Business Journal, the Village is taking, is taking action to condemn the, the easement rights of one of the owners of, at the South Ridge area. So the north end of South Ridge, formerly Sears, was owned by Seritage for many years, recently sold to a company called Fidelis, just as of this last March. And so that was a bit of a wrench in the, in our Village's redevelopment project. As you're all aware, the Village owns the Boston Store parcel, which is about fifteen acres. We've been in the, we have a development agreement in place with a developer to, to do a mixed-use project with high-end apartments, retail, and, and green space. And in order for that project to proceed, we needed to get the operating agreement for the mall to be rewritten. The operating agreement, which dates back to the sixties, basically has very restrictive rules on what can and can't built. And so in order to allow for a modern redevelopment project, not just this one, but anything going forward, we needed to get those easements and restrictions rewritten. So, we were able to, in the past couple of years, work very cooperatively with the, the owner for the mall. So they've been involved, and we've worked together on rewriting those restrictions in a way that will allow redevelopment and basically a, a revisioning of the mall campus altogether. But as I mentioned, in trying to, and, so there's really about four parties that would need to sign off on that new operating agreement. And so this party that came into play just this last spring, Fidelis, trying to get them up to speed and trying to get them to sign off on this new agreement, they had a whole slew of different questions and concerns. And so, it's dragged on now to the point where we, we didn't see a path forward without being, without having to use our statutory process of condemning their rights to the easement. And, and basically saying, you guys can get a, an appraisal, and the appraisal can say what the, what you believe the damages are, or what the Village would owe you for removing your rights to this easement. The Village already has its appraisal, which is zero dollars. And so they have sixty days to get their own appraisal, which will probably say something different. And so it's a statutory process that has about a nine, maybe nine to ten-month timeline. But it's really, it puts it on the clock to say, all right, this is the path we're going down. And if we're not able to negotiate something in the interim, then you're going to, you're gonna have your rights taken from these restrictions, and we're gonna move forward with the new operating agreement that we have been working on. And at that point, it will allow us to start to move forward with the redevelopment project. So to this point, you haven't seen any, you know, pretty pictures or detailed plans, because all it is, is very conceptual, high level of what's in our development agreement. We have development agreement, we have a new TIF district, which we appreciate the, the school support, the school district support as one of the joint review board members. But, once we get to the point where we can get this new operating agreement done, we can officially sell the property to the developer, and then they can put together their detailed plans, and it can come forward in a public process through the Plan Commission, through the Village Board, for the whole community to see the site plans, the architecture, all that type of, you know, fun stuff that we wish we were, we're hoping to already be in. But I will say, it's, it's a process that we only, you know, hope to have to do once. And this is, this is like, this is a quarter, I think, a quarter of our tax base that we're talking about. So this is extremely important to, to do this and to do it right. For anybody that's ever said, well, gee, did we make the right, the Village made the right decision getting in the middle of this and purchasing Boston Store? I would say absolutely. You know, we're in the driver's seat to try to control the destiny of, of the mall area. And like I said, it's a quarter of our tax base. So this is, this is a ride that we're, you know, we're, we're happy to be on and happy to try to get to the, the end of. And, but I think, you know, I keep saying, I, we start to see a light at the end of the tunnel, and, you know, I, I feel like we were very close until this new Fidelis got involved. And so now we're having to go to more legal means to, to get to where we need to go. But I think we still, we still feel like we're gonna, we're gonna get there. And, and we have a great developer who's been very patient and has a very excellent track record in these types of projects. So we're still, I'm still very optimistic about, about where we're going. It's just time and legal bills.
If you were to envision the next five to ten years, what would you say South Ridge is gonna look like? Do you have any idea?
Well, five to ten years, so this, the build-out of this redevelopment is probably, you know, eight to ten years, call it. So it will be in, call it Phase One or Two. We're probably done with Phase One, hopefully in Phase Two, that type of thing. But really, this is hopefully the, we see this as the catalyst to the, the complete revisioning of South Ridge. So when this moves forward, we expect, so, you know, the former Bailey's property, the, the Coles property, this is, I mean, we'll have to take a step back and, and complete, I think, a master plan for South Ridge. But this is hopefully transforming into more of a lifestyle mixed-use center, where it's not, you know, all dependent on retail, but it's, it's got, you know, obviously residential, but it's got some, some open space, hopefully some, some hospitality, more restaurants, medical office. I mean, it should be, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna be, our tax base, a quarter of it hanging on one type of industry. You know, it should be a diversified, modern, vibrant place. So that's the hope, but we have to get our foot in the door with this, this initial project and with the new operating agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any?
Anything else on South Ridge? I just have a couple other things I was gonna mention. South Ridge. So there is a new, so the Village is selling, is in the process of selling a piece of property next to Sendix, a, less than an acre. So we do have a tentative agreement with a company. We put out a request for proposals. We received just one proposal for a car wash. So they are in a process of requesting approvals from the Village. So that'll go before the Plan Commission on September sixth. It was tabled. But it will be in front of the, the Plan Commission September sixth, and then Village Board September nineteenth. And then lastly, redevelopment of the DSW outlot is in process. DSW Shoe Store is closed, and that'll be raised very soon. And the Village did approve half of the lot to be a Raising Cane's restaurant, and then the other half of the lot will be coming forward, a, a bank.
Another bank.
So, our, yeah, I'm not super excited about that one. That's not in a TIF district, so that's, you know, our, our zoning says, you know, it allows for certain commercial uses. And that is the, the commercial use that's coming forward for, so we're, yeah, more excited about the, the new chicken restaurant. But anyways, they have a right to, as long as they can meet the code, build a bank there. So that's what we'll be coming for.
Chick-fil-A happy about the new chicken restaurant?
Maybe not. I don't know. Sometimes they say if you, you know, if it's, if this is the, the chicken alley of the Milwaukee area, then, you know.
Wait, that's right. Isn't there a chicken issue with the Village? We won't talk about that.
That's why I voted yes.
You voted yes for the chicken?
Yes.
Very good. Awesome.
All right, so that's, I guess, the main things I was gonna highlight.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else from the Village, Managers, our Manager, Michael, I almost said Haas, seem to cover it all? Sounds good. All right, we're on to number nine, which is our next joint board meeting date. We said November. Do we have a date, or are we gonna try to?
There's a proposal for consideration on November twenty-eighth. It is the day after a scheduled school board meeting, but we can manage the agenda for the school board meeting to keep it light and have two meetings back-to-back. It is the best option to be within that November window, given that there will be a number of people leaving the community for the, New York, for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade.
So you, you are suggesting on the twenty-eighth?
Suggesting November twenty-eighth.
Okay.
November twenty, that's right before Thanksgiving.
That's right after Thanksgiving.
And you, you don't think that'll interfere? Well, I mean, probably not with us necessarily. I, I know you're probably heading out to Macy's.
No, the Macy's is the week before.
Oh, that's the week before. Okay, never mind. Got it. It's Thanksgiving.
Yep. Okay, so that is the proposed date, and if there's no objections, then we will plan for that.
Do we need to vote on that, or just?
I don't think a vote is necessary. Just looking for feedback. If there's some feedback on the date, we'll take that. But we'll plan for November twenty-eighth, and then if there's any objections in the near future, Mike and I can work through it to find an alternative date.
Would we be meeting Social again at five and then meeting at six, or, or, yeah, is that what we're talking? I may have.
You'll be cooking the Thanksgiving meal, Kathy.
Leftovers. They'll be bringing the leftovers. The Village has agreed to host.
Okay. Oh, that's right, the Village is. I do have a library board meeting that night, but I, I can cut that short. I just may be a little late for the, the beginning part. I'll be there for sure by six. Okay, okay. All right, moving on, we're looking for additional comments and questions from visitors, but I don't see any visitors. So we're at adjournment. I just wanna thank the Village Board again for all that you do for the community. And I, I know you guys have a common interest in what's best for Greendale. And so it was really nice sitting up here tonight with all of you. And I look forward to seeing you again in our joint meeting on November twenty-eighth. So we are adjourned. Thank you.